Commission to order, we will begin with our invocation. Administrator?
Please join us in an attitude of prayer. God in heaven, as we begin this meeting, we ask for guidance of our thoughts and actions so that we may have a successful meeting today. Help us to accomplish our goals and thank you for the opportunity to serve the residents of Clay County. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to meeting schedules. Administrator?
The next meeting of the commission will be next Wednesday, May 25th, at 6:00 PM for a business session.
Thank you. Honorary resolutions, I see none listed. That brings us to discussion items. We have one item under discussion. Administrator, I think this is the auditor's issue, so if you would like to introduce that, we will proceed.
That would be correct. This is a presentation by county auditor, updating the commissioner on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program 2.0.
By the way, before we continue, was just pointed out to me that I got too excited and went right by approval of the agenda. Let me go ahead and do that really quick. I just got so enthused, what can I say? Is there a motion related to approval of today's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, you are recognized to close.
Close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson. Yes, Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
I think I've made my quota of mistakes for the day, so hopefully that'll be done. That brings us back to where we were before, and that is discussion items. So we'll go ahead and pick it up where we left off.
Yes, the county auditor has an update for the commissioners on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program 2.0.
Yes, it's different.
All right. Victor Hulbert, Clay County Auditor, apologies for the delay there. Just wanted to hand out some things. On the screen, if you want to bring out or bring up the county website, claycountymo.gov/erap. Just wanted to give a brief update and seek consensus from the commission today regarding the ERAP 2.0 program and the last tranche for our audience and those in the public. ERAP stands for Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Its first iteration was passed with Consolidated Appropriations Act at the end of 2020. And then the second phase was rolled out with the American Rescue Plan Act in 2021. Basically, what it is, is assistance for tenants, rental tenants in Clay County for those who have arrears due to COVID. So both rent and utilities for, you know, during the pandemic. Under transparency there, you'll see the dropdown for emergency rental. There we go. Yeah, we'll get there. And, and so, that is, those were the, the two programs, and I just want to go by the presentation. I've given you kind of an outline for my discussion. To date, the county has received $4.5 million between both programs. 932 households have been served. You have two handouts within that. They aren't labeled, but essentially you can see on number nine on each of them, you have for 1.0, of that $4.5 million, or $3.2 million is from ERAP 1.0. That one is essentially complete. And 2.0, you have $1.2 million. There we go. There's the public page, and this information is on the website as well. It's updated monthly. But essentially, that's what you have, what we've done so far. 932 households have been served, 630 between 1.0, 302 from 2.0. And as you can see on my second bullet point there, 87% have been under 50% of area median income. So I think that's a success, that this has really been focused to those in need, as were required by the guidelines as well. Can't be more than 80% area median income. So I come to you today because on my third point there, ERAP 2.0, for that tranche, or for, for ERAP 2.0, we have received, we have provided $1.2 million so far. It's 75% of the assistance dollars that we can provide, which amounts to $1.7 million that we've received so far. And you can include the administrative bucket in that calculation, but we've already provided 75% of the assistance dollars. If we recall, you can do 85% for assistance, up to 15% for admin. We've done 75% of assistance. So we've met that benchmark. And the last time I came to you in February, brought up to the, seeking commission consensus about seeking the remaining 60% of ERAP 2.0, because we only got 40% upfront. The original award terms where you had to have had spent 50%, and then you would get it by, after March of 2022. They actually released guidance before then, saying, hey, you can apply early for your remaining 60%. US Treasury did. And they said, you just have to expend at least 75%. So I came to you in February, and I said, you know, do you see, do we have consensus to do this? We had agree agreement, and so we submitted that. Treasury changed the rules again, which I've come to note is very common. And, and so, they basically said, well, we're only going to give you half. So they gave us 30%, not 60%, which amounts to $864,000. So what I'm seeking your consensus with today is, you've already approved the entire 60%, you know, given that consensus, but because of this change, I just want to make sure that we are okay with similar process seeking that last 30%. It would be $864,000, $864,151.59 for our total ERAP 2.0 allocation of $2.8 million. That's, and that would be the, the last tranche available for ERAP 2.0. One thing I'll mention, though, is in weekly discussions with the, our nonprofit partners, who really are the, you know, they're the reason for the success of, of this program, because, you know, the county wasn't really able to do this. So we partnered with experts, and the consensus really has been, yes, we want to seek that. They still identify a need. However, you know, a concern I look at is how much administrative allocation we've already provided. And so, I would propose to you, and I'm seeking input, is most of this would go towards program, even over 85%. We have been approached by United Way, however, on what's called housing stability. There is a pro bono firm currently at our circuit court that works with eviction cases. And basically, what they do is connect us, connect those folks to this program, if they're eligible. So it's a win-win for landlords and tenants, because, you know, no one has to go through legal costs. You can provide the assistance. Because again, the payments for this program go to landlords to keep tenants housed. That, that firm is Legal Aid of Western Missouri. I don't have a contract yet. They are on contract with the city of Kansas City for their rental assistance program. It would be around $80,000. But again, the expectation would be that that's what they would do, is connect them to this program. They're already there, so it's really a sole source type of environment. And finally, I just want to mention, so I mentioned households. I think last time we had a question from Commissioner Carpenter about, you know, who's been declined, because that is a concern. And so I just brought some numbers there for your information of 24 total, out of those 1,600 applications and 900 served, 18 in 1.0 and 6 in 2.0. So that's really all I have. So I guess what I'm seeking is, you know, do we still have consensus? And I'm happy to answer any questions the best I can or get you that information, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Carpenter, I think, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make or add to the discussion?
I appreciate it. Thank you. First of all, thank you again for the update and for all the updates we've received along the way. I appreciate it. Glad to see the money getting to where it needs to get to in terms of helping folks. I just want to ask again, I assume the answer is the same. There's no downside to, to accepting additional dollars here. If there weren't enough recipients potentially with these funds, we're not penalized in any way for that, right?
That's correct. Yeah. So, yeah, the, the award terms and the guidance for ERAP 2.0 is that the deadline to expend these funds actually goes out until September 30th to 2025. So it's quite a, quite a lengthy time. You know, 1.0, it has a hard end of September 30th of this year. So, so with 2.0, there's a little more flexibility in that regard. And that's why I think Treasury has expressed why they're being careful, doing 30% and then 30%, because apparently the way this law was written with through the rescue plan is that these monies can't really be reallocated. They can't recapture them unless we voluntarily choose to do so after getting them. So, so, I mean, for, as far as the downside, I don't really, you know, see that potentially. I mean, it has slowed down overall from the very beginning, but the nonprofits are indicating there is still a need that they could use this.
Good deal. And then the United Way program partnering with Legal Aid, which, you know, they do a lot of fantastic work in a lot of areas, including helping folks with evictions. So is it the case that it would sort of automatically in an eviction case, that they would do the evaluation with, with each eviction case to see if the person would potentially qualify? Is that the idea?
That's, that's my understanding, yes. And, and so it'd be having a dedicated attorney there to connect them and communicate it with, you know, the, the landlord's attorney, the, the judge, and, and to have that available. And it's already happening. United Way has been the organization funding this group right now, and that funding ends at the end of this month, is my understanding.
Gotcha. And so as part of, you know, my instinct certainly is to, is to go, apply for the, the additional 30%. But beyond that, do, what will we need to do to delineate that some of that money goes to, to the legal aid program?
So I would want to bring before you, similar to the other nonprofits and memorandum of our standing, with Legal Aid, and run that through staff and make sure that it meets the same criteria. But again, that's, that's really it, just making sure we have that agreement before we, we set up. And then, like everyone else, it'd be sort of a billed monthly, you know, itemized invoices to, you know, make sure that that's the work that was actually performed, so.
Good deal. Well, again, thanks for the updates.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No, I have no questions today, but once again, thank you for putting this together and for the update. I think this, the streamlining of the, with the legal aid would be wonderful, especially with the court system. It seems like this is just a natural transition. That would be wonderful for to move forward. Like I said, no questions, but thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to seeing the contract when it comes in.
Thank you. And could you, let's see, you're seeking consensus from the commission. Could you go ahead and just distill that down into one or two sentences so that, to recap it, and then, and then we will go ahead and we will seek consensus from the commission? So what, what are you seeking commission, commission consensus for in kind of a, just a recap?
Yeah. So, I mean, commission's approved the grand award and the terms, you know, already with it. So this is really just kind of the process to grab this last 30%. And as with last time, we complete a form. I put in the numbers, and they want the designated representative, which is the presiding commissioner, to, to sign it, the authorized representative. So that's why I'm seeking is consensus to conduct that again for this last 30%.
So is the commission clear on what consensus is being sought for?
I am. Thanks.
I am.
Very well. If, is there consensus on the commission to go forward?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And that would be me as well. So you have unanimous consensus to go forward. Thank you. That concludes discussion items. That brings us to public hearings. There aren't enlisted. There are no consent agenda items. That brings us to our regular agenda. The first two items, I believe, are companion issues. That would be 2022-170 and 171. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-170 and 171 are consideration of replat and final plat of Johnson &amp; Johnson Estates for lots 1 and 2 Middleton Acres. Planning and Zoning Manager Jones is here to provide additional information.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So our first case is Johnson &amp; Johnson Estates. It's a rezoning and final plat. As it is currently, it is lot 1 and 2 of Middleton Acres. It's, it exists as two lots. So everything outlined in yellow basically is split down the middle, and there's two lots existing that are both zoned R5, and they're right under 10 acres each. The proposal is to take those two lots and combine them into one lot, because the owner of the lot, of the two lots wants to build right on that middle property line where there's a utility easement running through. So in order to do that, we need to vacate that utility easement and get rid of that property line. So this is a unique case, because we're putting property back together. This was originally subdivided in 2021. We would rezone this to R1, which is our current standard for lots that are between 10 and 20 acres. And basically, nothing would change, other than make one lot and get rid of that property line and get rid of that utility easement that runs in between the two lots. As far as the comprehensive plan, this is in the urban services tier. The natural resources tier is just to the north. The urban service tier allows lots that are 10-plus acres. This lot meets those requirements. You can see the surrounding area a little bit here. There's a mix of smaller lots to the east, and then large acreages to the west. You see 92 Highway is just to the north of the, the property. This has the same five rezoning criteria that we discuss every time I come up to commission. Staff believes those have been addressed and/or met. This follows the same process where we published this in the Courier Tribune. We sent 10 adjacent property owner letters. We posted a sign on site. And this follows our normal pattern of going in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, then county commission, and then recording the plat. This is a little bit of a unique case, because we just subdivided in 2021. So we did not have the applicant reach out to all the outside agencies, because they approved it for two lots. So we, as staff, just reached out to those agencies individually, and all those agencies indicated that they had no objections to this case. Typically, people aren't upset when you're combining lots. They are more concerned when you're subdividing. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff recommended approval with two conditions. That would be to record the resolution of the vacation, and we'll talk about that in the next case. And then removing a note from the plat, we did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve this case. The applicant is present, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Jones from the commission?
No, thank you.
If the applicant is present, they certainly are free to comment. And as going forward with all of these, certainly, the applicant is, is certainly welcome to say whatever they would like to say. It is not a requirement, so it is strictly optional on the part of the applicant. Would the applicant care to comment on it at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any, is there a motion related? No, no, we, is there any, is there any further discussion on the commission on 171, 171? Seeing none, this is about as non-controversial as it gets. Is everybody good with consent?
Good with me.
Yes.
Very well. Then we'll go on our consent calendar for next, next meeting. Just so that the applicant knows and anyone else, what the action we're taking at this meeting is to put it either on consent or on regular calendar. On consent, it will be combined with other non-controversial items and voted on as a group. Items that we put on regular agenda will come up and be individually taken up, as we are doing right now with everything. So certainly, you are welcome to come to that or any other meeting. But since it's on consent, that, that makes it a little bit, maybe increases your comfort level. I'll put it that way. Very well. That brings us to 2022-172. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-172 is, as mentioned in the prior presentation, consideration of vacation of the utility easement in lots 1 and 2 of the Middleton Acres. And again, Planning and Zoning Manager Jones can answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is getting rid of that 15-foot utility easement, so they can build their house on the middle of those lots. We have specific criteria in the land development code that gives four criteria that must be met. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission believe those criteria have been met. We reach out to utility companies with a request like this. The Water District, Evergy, and Platte Clay Electric have responded that they have no objection to this case. Staff recommended approval with one condition, which is that resolution be recorded. And we've received no opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. And I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Questions or comments from the commission?
No questions.
No questions.
Any comment from the applicant? No comment from the applicant as well. Seems like this one would also fit on consent, if that's the commission. Very well. 2022-172 will be on next meeting's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-173, 174, and 175. Administrator?
Resolutions 2022-173 and 174 and 175 are companion ordinances. They consider the zoning preliminary and final plat for Bab Acres. Planning and Zoning Manager Kip Jones is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is a rezoning preliminary and final for Bab Acres. I've got it up on the screen. It is currently unplatted, roughly 67 acres, zoned agricultural. And there is one house on the property right now, which is right here. The proposal is to divide it into three lots. You would have your one, the lot with the house, approximately six acres. This would be zoned R5. We have an 18-acre lot to the south that has a blue line stream running across it with no structures. This would be zoned R1, which is our current standards for 10 to 20 acres. And then we'd have a large 40-acre lot, which includes the pond, that would be zoned agricultural. Anything larger than 20 can keep the ag zoning designation. The 18-acre lot would be required to have an agricultural land preservation, and then we talked about the blue line stream. The comprehensive plan tells us, this is kind of a unique property. It sits right in the middle of two tiers. The natural resources tier allows five-plus acre lots. The urban services tier allows 10-plus acre lots. Staff believes this meets kind of the, the conditions in the area. This is also, and I'll talk about this a little more here in a minute, but it's within a mile of the city of Excelsior Springs. Our code requires that we reach out to cities when we're subdividing a property that's within a mile and a half of the city. For this case, we did not receive any comments back from the city of Excelsior Springs. Here's the general area. You can see city limits just to the southeast. And there's quite a few five-ish acre lots to the west and north. And we feel with the six-acre lot, the 40, and the 18, it kind of matches the surrounding area. This has the same five rezoning and plating, or same five rezoning criteria and the two preliminary plat criteria. Staff believes those have been either met and/or addressed. This follows the same process. We mailed a total of 25, five certified letters for this case. Outside agency approval. They've received all their approvals from the outside agencies. The highway department has requested that silt be removed from the existing culvert. The water district can serve the additional lots. And the public health center has given preliminary and final approval. And MoDOT has approved access for lots 2 and 3 from 69 Highway. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff recommended approval with one condition, which were some changes to the plaits. Public comment included concerns about whether this property could be divided again. I would not call that opposition, in my opinion. They just asked if it could be divided. And, you know, we can never say never, especially when you have a 40-acre lot with quite a bit of road frontage. This probably will be divided again at some point. And it possibly could be annexed into the city of Excelsior if they choose, if they chose to do so. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0 to approve, and I would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Certainly, the, if there is any future division of that properties, and they would come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and before this body, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions.
Is the applicant present, and would they like to comment? No comment from the applicant. It's very good. Any comments or discussion from the commission?
No, I think I'm comfortable with consent on this one as well.
Very well. If there is consensus, we will put those three items on consensus for next meeting. That would be 173, 174, and 175.
Commissioner, if I may for just a second.
Yes.
On these three items, I assume it's consensus with approval.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And for the prior three items that were also on consent, I took that to mean consent with approval marked.
Is that, is that reflective of what the commission had in mind?
Absolutely.
Okay. So yes, with that caveat. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
That brings us to 2022-176, 177. Yeah, just two. Please proceed.
Resolution 2022-176 and 177 are companion ordinances. They're regarding the zoning and preliminary plat for Eagle View. Planning and Zoning Manager Kip Jones is still at the computer and will be happy to provide information to the commission.
This seems to be the Kip Jones show, but please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is Eagle View. This one probably looks a little bit familiar. It's at 124th and A Highway, and earlier this year, it was approved for 10 lots. They had some lots that were less than five acres, which required a variance to be able to put a septic on a lot less than five acres. They did not receive that variance. So they resubmitted with lots, two less lots, so we're talking eight lots. Currently, it's unplatted. It's zoned RU80 and has one house on it. And here's kind of the proposal. It's eight lots. We would go up to the R5 zoning, because each lot meets that five-acre minimum. The lots range in size from five to 10 acres. The proposal is to extend this road that kind of deadends at the property line into a little cul-de-sac that would serve four of the lots, and there'd be four lots on the outside. The variance would not be needed, because they meet the five-acre minimum. They're proposing to put roughly 12 acres in a preservation easement, and there is a blue line stream on the north side of the property, where there'd be a 75-foot setback. The comprehensive plan tells us this is in the urban services tier. This is typically the tier where we want to see development. It's within a mile of the city of Kansas City. So again, we reached out to the city. Kansas City did respond that they have no objection to this proposal. The intent of this tier is to promote urban development compatible with cities. Staff feels like with the city stating no objection, that we meet the intent of this. And this tier actually allows a greater density than what's being proposed. Here's the surrounding area a little bit. I want to point out, there's multiple subdivisions of lots that are anywhere between two and five acres in this area to the north and west. And then there's another subdivision down here that are roughly three to five acres each, and we'll talk about density a little bit more here in a minute. This has the same rezoning and plat criteria that staff believes have either been addressed or met. This one follows some of the same process, but is a little bit different. So we also put this in the newspaper. We sent 34 letters for this case, posted the sign, but this is considered a major subdivision, because it has infrastructure. So there's extra steps with a case like this. So this is the first step. If this is approved, then their next step would be to submit construction plans for all the additional infrastructure that would be installed. And then, after that, they can submit their final plat, which will kick off a new set of public meetings. So this will come back before the, the county commission with the final plat after the construction plans are approved. Once that final plat's approved, that's when they can install the infrastructure. And then once that infrastructure is approved by the county, the water district, all the outside agencies, that's when they can record the plat and sell the lots. So there's quite a bit when it's a major subdivision like this. They did receive all their outside agency approvals, but this case is a little bit unique, too, because it was just approved for 10 lots. So we circled back to all those agencies with two less lots. Obviously, if you can get driveways for 10 lots, you're going to be able to get driveways for eight lots. Obviously, if you can get driveways for 10 lots, you're going to be able to get driveways for eight lots. So there were no issues there. Same as with the septic systems, with the five-acre minimum. We actually did not have to go to Department of Natural Resources. This is all permitted through the Clay County Public Health Center. The infrastructure that would be required for R5 zoning is asphalt curb and gutter. We're going to hook up to the Water District. Hydrants would be required, and a septic system is allowed. You can see on the density chart, Eagleview is the subdivision we're talking about. It comes out to about 5.81 acres per lot. And these are some of the surrounding subdivisions that were done years ago. This proposal is at a less density than a lot of the surrounding subdivisions. Staff recommended approval with 17 conditions. I'm not going to go over all those conditions. But I do want to point out the third one here. At the original case, we had the adjacent property owner to the west had some concerns about stormwater. So the developer held a meeting with that neighbor, and they came to an agreement that the developer would install a berm or a swale that would mitigate some of the stormwater effects on the neighbor. And so we added that as a condition, and that neighbor withdrew their opposition to this case. We did not receive any opposition leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we talked about the condition to address that concern. And Planning and Zoning voted five to zero to recommend approval on this case. And I would be happy to answer any questions Commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you. Yeah, they had actually touched on the one thing that I had a question about, and that was the, the water, the drainage study that is enclosed here. Wanted to make sure that there were no change in the plans that would make that any less valid than it was. It was submitted December 1st, 2021, so last year. It still is applicable, I'm sure, but I want to ask the question all the same.
It is, but it's a preliminary report. So if this gets approved, they will submit a updated stormwater report that will be reviewed by the county on-call engineer.
So with the, I think you said it was the third condition of 17. That has resolved at least the, what we're aware of as far as any concerns with water runoff?
With the neighbor to the west, yes. Now, they still have to, I mean, the, the general rule is you can't allow more water to run off pre-development than post-development, and that's what the engineers will look at.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Is the applicant present? Ah, and certainly, by the way, when you come to the microphone, make sure the green light is on. Identify yourself and speak into the microphone, and we will proceed. So go right ahead.
Steve Wager, civil engineer representing the developer, 6127 Northwest Pine Ridge Circle Parkville, Missouri. No real concerns, except for it's just going to address your stormwater concerns. We went above and beyond as far as the berms and stuff we had on the back. And we met with the adjacent property owner, and he was concerned about that getting into his septic system and sewer system. And we agreed to block that off. And also, we are preserving trees along that area, too, because that's in that preservation easement. So I believe we are meeting his requirements or requests. And I have talked to his attorney that met with us, and he was in agreement with our condition.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners for this person? Thank you very much. Any other persons wishing to comment on this? Seeing none, so we are taking up 176 and 177. Is everyone comfortable with, with consent?
I am.
Yes.
In that case, items 2022-176, 177 will appear on consent agenda at our next meeting. With approval, thank you. Easy to skip over that. That brings us to 2022-178, 179, and 180, Administrator?
Resolution 2022-178, 179, and 180 are companion resolutions regarding the zoning, the preliminary plat, and the final plat for Estates at Tillman Farms. And Planning and Zoning Manager Kip Jones is available for presentation and answer questions.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. So this is Estates at Tillman Farms. Currently, it's unplatted, zoned agricultural. The whole property is 113 acres. Only 68, roughly 68 acres are included in the plat. The rest of the acreage on the west side of the property meets an exemption, so it does not have to be part of the plat. There is floodplain on the property and a blue line stream, and it's adjacent to the city of Smithville. Here's the proposed plat. We're talking about six lots. So there are four lots on the east side, those, and then one lot in behind them. These are lots one through five. They range in size from 7.11 to 9.79 acres. They would be zoned R5. Lot six is this large 30-acre lot. Since it's larger than 20, it could stay zoned agricultural. Each lot would be served by a septic system. And the two lots, the 30-acre lot and the nine-acre lot, would have access off of 92 Highway. So this is 92 Highway right here. This is Tillman Road, which is maintained by the city of Smithville. These two would have access off 92. These four off of Tillman Road. The comprehensive plan tells us this is within the Urban Services Tier, which again, is that tier that we typically see the development. It's, it's within a mile of city of Smithville. Now, the Urban Services Tier for the county's comprehensive plan tells us that we, it guides us that we should do 10-plus acres in this area. And I just told you, we're doing less than 10 acres. One of the exemptions is if the city within a mile will grant an exemption, then we can go less than 10 acres. And typically, that's pretty tough to get a city to do. But in this case, city of Smithville gave a very detailed letter to Planning and Zoning telling us that they felt that the proposed lot sizes met that surrounding area, and this is what the city of Smithville wanted to see. So that's the reason we're recommending approval, is because Smithville is on board with this, this project. Here's kind of the surrounding area. It's a little bit unique. So anything in this peach, that has this peach overlay, is city of Smithville. This is our subject property here. This is the part of the property that we said met the exemption, so it doesn't have to be platted. So you can see there's properties, if they don't have the peach overlay, they're unincorporated. It's like this property is totally surrounded by city of Smithville. And you see the same thing here and here. So it's a mismatch of city of Smithville and unincorporated in this area. And that's one of the reasons we reach out to the cities, because we don't want to do something that's going to inhibit them in the future. This has the same five rezoning criteria and the two preliminary plat criteria. It follows that same process that we've talked about. We sent a total of 24 letters for this case and published it in the Courier Tribune. Outside agency approvals, we talked about MoDOT. The Water District can serve the lots. The developer will be required to extend the water main for lots five and six. And city of Smithville granted that exemption that we discussed. And they also requested right-of-way for a future connection of Liberty and Deer Run Streets. And we'll talk about that here in a minute. The Clay County Public Health Center gave preliminary and final approval. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff recommended approval with three conditions. We did receive some opposition. The opposition talked about traffic concerns, the safety of the intersection at Liberty Street and 92 Highway, and concerns about additional septic systems in the area. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote five to zero to recommend approval. And the Planning and Zoning Commission made comments that they felt this application met the comprehensive plan and all of the Land Development Code criteria. And I'm going to go back to the map, because we talked about Smithville requesting some right-of-way. So it's kind of hard to see, but right in here is Liberty Street, and it comes out to 92 Highway. And then this is Deer Run Street. And there's already right-of-way north of Deer Run. And the city of Smithville requested additional right-of-way cutting across lot six. So this connection could be made if the city chose to in the future. So that's one of our conditions, is that, is adding 60 feet of right-of-way to allow for that connection if it ever happens. I would be happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have, and the applicant is present as well.
Any questions of Mr. Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Is the applicant, the applicant is present? Would you care to comment? Are there any questions of the applicant? Is there anyone else present wishing to speak on this matter? Any discussion within the Commission?
No discussion, other than I'm comfortable with consent to prove on this one as well.
I'm comfortable with that as well.
Very well. We will put 2022-178, 179, and 180 on next meeting's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022-181, 182, and 183, Administrator?
Resolutions 2022-181, 182, and 183 are companion resolutions for the zoning preliminary and final plat for the McPhee Meadows Estates. And for his last presentation this evening, we have the Planning and Zoning Manager Kip Jones.
Very well, proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning and Zoning Manager. And I will say, the county administrator did not sound disappointed with that. So this is McPhee Meadow Estates. It's outlined in yellow. Currently, it's unplatted, it's zoned ag, roughly 39 acres. It's in the Natural Resources Tier. This is actually a case from our February Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The applicant requested that it be delayed, and that's why it's coming in front of County Commission now. The proposal is to divide it into five lots. Lots one through four would be between five and seven acres. Lots, lot five would be 14.95. So on the screen, the, these four lots are the, the five-to-seven-acre lots. And then there's the 14-acre lot here. And this is 164th Street, I believe, and Francis Road. So it's kind of on a corner lot there. Each lot would be served by a septic system, and we would allow one home and one accessory dwelling unit per parcel. This is located in the Natural Resources Tier. It meets one of the exemptions for the Natural Resources Tier for going less than 20 acres, which is five-plus acres with the agricultural land preservation. So each of these lots has that agricultural land preservation. And that's just a way for the county to preserve a portion of the lot, where the property owner can't put their home or accessory buildings. It's designed to protect ponds, wooded areas, streams, things like that. Here's the surrounding area. You can see the property outlined in yellow. C Highway is to the east, and you can just see the tip of Smithville Lake to the northwest. So this is north of 92 Highway towards Smithville Lake. We've talked about the five rezoning criteria and the two plating criteria. Staff believes those have been either met or addressed. It follows that same process where we put it in the newspaper and sent 21 letters on this case. They've received all their outside agency approvals. And staff has recommended approval with two conditions, which are just a couple of changes to the plat. No opposition was received leading up to or during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We did receive a call from a neighbor with concerns about an abandoned well. Staff notified the property owner and provided information on how to decommission a well properly. But I don't have any, county doesn't have any regulations that they must do that. But we wanted the property owner to be aware. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to approve with the conditions recommended by staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions Commissioners may have, and I believe the applicant is present as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to ask about that. Thank you for taking that up about the well. That seems to answer the question that I was going to put forward. Questions or comments from the, from Commissioners?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to make any comments at this time? Are there any questions of the applicant?
No questions.
Can I, can I make one comment, Commissioner?
Yes, please proceed.
I, I just want it noted for the record, that was 50 slides in less than half an hour. So I just...
We'll get you a candy bar.
Thank you.
Little one. Little one. Very well. Is, is there consensus from the Commission to put this on consent with approval checked on the box?
Works for me.
Very well. 2022-181, 182, and 183 will be on next week's agenda with the box approved checked. See, I can learn as we go. That brings us to 2022-148, Administrator?
Resolution 2022-148 is consideration of approving the TIPS Hotline Renewal Contract for 2022 with the Kansas City Metropolitan Crime Commission, requested by the Sheriff's Department. The amount is for $3,000. And Captain Agdarian is here if, to present and answer any questions.
Please proceed, Captain.
All right, good afternoon Commissioners. Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This request is something that we bring before the Commission annually. This is the Kansas City Metropolitan Crime Commission operates the Crime Stoppers Program. And specifically, we enter into this contract with the Commission every year to take part in the TIPS Hotline Program, which is a, a text or phone way for people to provide information about crimes. So just like the name says, tips about crimes. So anyway, we, we bring this before you annually, and we are, we'd like to renew this partnership with the Kansas City Crime Commission again this year.
Thank you. I don't see anything, this does not involve the expenditure of funds, does it?
It, it does.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's three, it's a $3,000 line item that is approved in the annual budget, specifically that line item for the TIPS Hotline Contract.
It is, yeah, correct. It is a budgeted, approved budgeted expense and falls within the budgeted amount.
The reason I was making that inquiry was if we had the option of putting this on for consent.
You certainly can put it on consent if that's the Commission's pleasure.
Thank you. Any questions of the captain?
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue, seeing none? I think unless there is an objection, 2022-168 could go on our consent agenda.
I'm good with that, yep.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, I think we're on 148, but yes.
Did I say, I say some...
We're on 148, but yes. I'm comfortable with consent.
Oh, okay, I'm looking at...
I think you turned it fast.
Thank you, yes, I got, I'm, once again, getting ahead of myself.
That's all right.
Thank you for the correction. So one, so 2022-148 will be on consent next time? I think I clearly need a vacation. That brings us to 2022-168.
Resolution 2022-168 is the consideration of approving a professional services agreement with City Telecoin Company that provides multiple services in the detention facility. And Captain Agdarian is here to present and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Okay, Captain Amy Agdarian, Clay County Sheriff's Office. This is a request to award a contract to City Telecoin. And working with County Purchasing, our detention staff identified those characteristics of, of the vendor that we would really like to see. And in this case, we are taking a, two, currently, we have two vendors providing the services. We ask that we look into a, a vendor that could provide all of the services. So City Telecoin will be providing inmate communications, so kiosk, tablets, telephone services, as well as the commissary service, which is currently with Swanson. But again, when Captain Ray Franks came in this year, one of his goals was to streamline services so we just could have one vendor for as few services, or as many services as possible. So there is no cost to the county. There is, this is simply a, a service that we allow City Telecoin to bring in, to provide services to the inmates, and it is fully funded by the inmates.
Very good. Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Okay.
No questions, thank you.
So 2022-168 for the, I picked it up with the other stack, that's why I got it out of order.
That's all right, I was here for that one, too.
For consent?
Works for me.
Yes.
Very well. 2022-168 will be on our consent agenda for next time. That brings us to 2022-184, Administrator?
Resolution 2022-184 is consideration of cost-sharing agreement through Mid-America Regional Council, Mark, for regional aerial photography for 2022. This is a request from the Assessor's Office, and Assessor Tracy Baldwin is here to present.
Please proceed.
Tracy Baldwin, Clay County Assessor. And that's exactly what this is, is a cost-sharing agreement with Mark, the Mid-America Regional Council, for our aerial photos of the entire county. The Assessor's Office picks up 60%, and the 40% is picked up by the cities in the county. And this is an every-two-year agreement.
Questions or comments?
No questions, thank you, though.
No questions, thank you.
Since this involves expenditure money, 2022-184 for regular agenda?
I think so, yep.
Very good. That brings us to 2022-169, Administrator?
Resolution 2022-169 is consideration of a term and supply contract with CNC Group for emergency management system maintenance. This request comes from facilities and... This request comes from facilities, and Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to provide information and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, before you, this is for our energy management program. We had 26 vendors reach out and access our RFP, but we only had one respondent, and that is the CNC Group. And the energy management program operates all of the electronic computers that does lighting controls, heating and cooling, water temperatures. It's a very critical component to what we do. So we are asking for approval for this term and supply with the CNC Group, who has actually been a vendor for several years with us.
Okay. Questions?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Would the commission like to go consent on 2022, 169, or would you prefer regular?
I'm comfortable either way. Thanks.
I'm comfortable with consent.
Very well. 2022, 169 will appear on next meeting's consent agenda. That brings us to 2022, 185. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, 185 is consideration of a sales agreement and payment for the Bicentennial Gala to be held at the Elms Hotel and Spa Facility. Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to present some information and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Again, Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. I have been working with the Bicentennial Committee as their liaison, and the Elms Hotel is an event that's going to take place in November. It is going to be their final gala wrap-up event. And what we are asking for is approval to enter into a contract with the Elms Hotel to block banquet rooms, a few hotel rooms for the volunteers that are staffing and working the event. The amount is... Wasn't a pre-approved budgeted, not to exceed $25,000. They are actually actively looking for some sponsors to help pay for this event, but this would allow us to secure being able to hold the final event at the Elms Hotel.
Very good. I understand they're meeting today, actually.
Yes, yes, they are. They're working very busily over at I-Works at this moment.
Very good. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So this event, who's invited to this event?
It is my understanding that this is an invitation event for the final wrap-up party.
So like, who would be invited?
I honestly don't have that information, or Commissioner. I'd be happy to reach out to them to find that out for you.
So I did notice that there was the budgeted amount. It said for $80,000. So, and I know that we put in there for $25,000 in this year's budget, so they're looking for the sponsors to make up the difference for that?
Well, if there's any expenditures over in what they're allowed to have, they're looking for sponsors to pay for any of that. They haven't finalized everything on this event. The $80,000 was a year total for all of their events. For example, we have a June 4th time capsule opening event that is coming up soon. They've been hosting various things. They have a photo contest going on that's starting with prizes to those that have the best photo taken with our mascot clay.
Okay, I'll just be curious to get some more information, so thank you.
Yeah, and obviously, since there's expenditure money involved, it would be... I would certainly imagine us putting this on regular agenda, and at that time, hopefully there will be a little bit more information forthcoming from the Bicentennial Commission.
And I'm certainly hoping that one of the committee members that is planning the event will be available perhaps next week to address any of your questions, but I will be seeking additional information.
That was kind of what I was getting at when I was saying they're meeting right now, because it would be acting on this, not just because of the money, but because of the type of event it is. I think we're much better off, as commission, hearing from a member of that board before proceeding, and this way we'll have that opportunity by putting it on regular agenda.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions?
No, thank you.
So 2022, 185 for regular agenda at our next meeting?
Agreed, yep.
Very good. That brings us to one... Excuse me. 2022, 186. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, 186 is the approval of sale for surplus property in the auction as per the code. And again, Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to provide information.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. Yes, Commissioners, what you have before you is an itemized list. Primarily, this is electronics, old keyboards, old monitors, TV monitors from the Sheriff's Department that no longer work, towers that aren't working. There are also three non-working pontoon boats on your list. Two of them are 1997 models. One was a 2008. And there's also one vehicle that is a 1998 van that is also in this grouping for disposal.
Wow, quite a collection. So once this auction has taken place, what... How is any item that does not get auctioned off? How is that disposed of?
Well, the vendor that takes the items is responsible for legally disposing of anything that does not go at the surplus auction.
Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Thank you.
Very well. Are we good with 2022, 186 for consent?
Yes.
I am.
Very well. 2022, 186 will be on consent for our next meeting. That brings us to 2022, 187. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022, 187 is consideration of amending Resolution 2021, 97 for additional funding for litigation, and County Councilor Graham will provide information and answer any questions.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you probably recall, we are in a fairly protracted litigation with Le Cleed Spire regarding the assessment of property, and we are rapidly approaching the trial in middle of June, approximately one month away. And as we get closer, we're going to need some additional funding, primarily for our expert witnesses that will need to fly in to testify at that hearing.
Very good. This is an item that requires some expenditure of money, so I think we're probably looking at the appropriate place for it to be its regular agenda next time.
I would agree with that.
Are there any questions or comments?
No, other than, as far as we know, this time, this is the only anticipated additional cost leading up to trial?
I think this is... The idea, my request was, you know, give me a number that will get us through the trial. And that's what I believe this number is. Of course, post-trial, depending on the outcome, a year from now, we might be looking at something additional, but I hope not. The main issue here is for expert witnesses, which was the same thing that happened earlier last year. And of course, if this were to go forward, we wouldn't need that again. We would be, you know, dealing with legal issues with the court as opposed to evidentiary issues that would involve a witness.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
No questions. Thanks.
Very well. With that, 2022, 187 will appear on next week's regular agenda. That brings us to 2022, 166. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, 166 is a recommendation for appointments by presiding commissioner to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. There are three reappointments: Randall Morris, Christine Fleishman, and Mark Beggs, whose terms would expire December 31st, 2025; and two new appointments, Kevin Knox and Joseph Decker, whose terms would expire December 31st, 2024.
Very well. Yeah, this is one of our commissions that got a little behind, so we're trying to kind of catch up, make sure that we have the staggered terms that we need to have as well. These are all... You know, three are reappointments, two are new appointments. Are there any comments or questions, obviously, on this and the other ones going forward? It would be my thought to have them on regular, just to give commissioners any additional opportunities to reach out to these individuals.
Yes, I feel comfortable with that.
Are there any questions for today?
No, no. I don't think so, other than, I know Commissioner Thompson often asks the question, were there other applicants? So I am curious about that. And then, just in terms of, on an ongoing basis, you know, what kind of steps we're doing to communicate to the public that if they're interested in applying? I know there's been a lot of discussion around that, so just any information in that regard would love to have.
Administrator?
Certainly. So for the Board of Zoning Adjustment, in addition to the two new applicants that we received, we do and did receive two other applications that were presented to presiding commissioner. On the city-county's website, we always have the application and a listing of all the boards and committees. And so we get applications throughout, and we have created a system in which we organize those applications by their interests, by boards and committees. And so when a vacancy or a term expires, those are presented then to the commissioner for review.
Commissioner Thompson?
I think I have a follow-up question to that. So there was two other applicants that applied for this board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any way that we could get a copy of those other two applications, especially if they were in the running? I'd just be curious to see them as well, as we are making some final decisions. Sure. Thanks.
Very good. So 2022, 166 will be on regular agenda for next time? That brings us to 2022, 188. Administrator?
Resolution... Excuse me. Resolution 2022, 188 is also appointments to the Board of the Development Disabilities Resource Board. There are two reappointments, Richard White and Dr... And I'm sorry, I'm going to miss her name out. Dr. Schreider... Schreit...
Yeah, that's...
The terms will expire January 2025.
You're referring, of course, to Dr. Patricia.
Yeah.
Richard White.
Once again, these are reappointments. I don't recall... We've got one more vacancy, do we not?
That is correct. On the Development Disability Resources Board, there is still one vacancy on the board. There are two applications that we currently have for this board that are currently under review by the commissioner for eligibility.
And this is... Many of the boards are very light on their requirements. This particular one, we are required to have a certain number of persons on the board who have a medical background, like Dr. Patricia, others, who have family members who are affected by a disability of one sort or another, developmental disability of one sort or another. The applicants that we have, as far as I can tell, are... Would qualify. I believe we are in good shape as far as the number of members required from different sorts of groups right now, so we're not really... There's not much of a constraint on having a person who has specifically a medical background or with a family history, so it's a little bit more wide open than it might otherwise be. So I wanted to... I thought we would go ahead and reappoint the two that were currently serving. They expressed interest, and then that would leave the final slot open. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
With that, I would put 2022, 188 on for regular, if that's okay with everybody?
Agreed.
That brings us to 122, 189. Administrator?
Yes, Resolution 2022, 189 is appointment of members to the Senior Services Board. There is a reappointment, Susan Bacon, whose term would expire December 31st of 2025, and a new appointment, Mr. Eric Johnson, whose term would also expire December of 2025. Just for information for the commission, there is still one vacancy on this board. At this time, we have one application in for consideration, and certainly if anyone is listening and is interested in serving on the Senior Services Board, we certainly would entertain their application. So again, one new appointment, one reappointment, and there's still one vacancy to fill.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments on 189?
No questions. Thanks.
No questions.
Very well. 2022, 189, if it's the way of the commission, will be on regular for next meeting? I did say 189, did I not?
Yeah.
Good. Just a little sanity check there. That brings us to 2022, 190. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, 190 is appointment of members to the Domestic Violence Board. There is a correction to the draft resolution that was included in your packet. So we... The resolution indicated two names, both reappointments, Don Kramer and Lynn Fulmer. We had had conversations with Fulmer, who indicated that the application would be received, and they were interested in being reappointed. So being proactive, we added the name to the resolution. However, we have not received an application from that applicant, so before next week, we will remove Fulmer's name at this point in time. And so the resolution would be simply to reappoint Kramer for a term that would expire in December of 2024. With regard to the Domestic Violence Board, there is two expired seats remaining, and at this time, we do not have any applications for that. So again, anyone listening and that is interested in serving, we certainly would welcome their application for consideration.
And this would be a board that has... The requirements are relatively simple. Resident of Clay County, current on their property taxes, I think is the only requirement. Is that correct, Administrator? Or are there any additional?
I believe so. You know, one of the other things that we are very cognizant of now, as we bring the appointments for consideration, is in compliance with the new charter. And so the charter basically also encourages that the boards are well-represented between both districts. So that is also one of the things that we take into consideration. That being said, some of our statutory boards have certain specific requirements that we must follow as we look at appointments for those boards.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No questions. Thanks.
2022, 190 then will appear on regular agenda, if that's good with everybody? That brings us to our final, and this is not too bad. We've only been at it for about a little over an hour, almost hour and 10 minutes. That brings us to 2022, 192. Administrator?
Resolution 2022, 192 is an appointment of members to the Bicentennial Commission. We have a new appointment, Scott Cole, whose term will expire May 12, 2023. This committee obviously somewhat has a shelf life because of the purpose of the committee. It is noted that there is still one vacancy remaining. There are other applications that are under review. I believe we have two applications at this time for consideration for that vacant position.
Thank you. By the way, and I didn't think to mention this before, but certainly in the case of Mr. Cole, constitutionally, I am required, and I think it's good practice in any case, to consult with the administrator on these appointments, but also on this one particularly. I consulted with the chairman of that, of the Bicentennial Commission, and she was enthusiastic about this particular appointment. So we do have one other vacancy, and there are... I'm sorry, you said two or three. It's three, wasn't it?
We currently have two applications...
One had withdrawn.
...that are interested in this position. We had three, but one withdrew.
Yes, that was my understanding.
And is interested in it different.
So there are two other persons currently in the queue, but... So Mr. Cole is someone, like I say, who had the... Who's been working with the Bicentennial Commission, and so this would kind of make it official. Are there any questions or comments on 192?
No questions, except for I would just request if we could have the applicants as well, the applications to look over before next week as well, and that's all I got.
2022, 192 then will be on regular agenda?
Sounds good.
All right. Would anybody like to give an attempt to making a motion related to today's regular agenda?
I'll make the attempt, Commissioner.
Please proceed.
I move that we put the following items on next week's regular agenda. 2022, 184, 185, 187, 166, 188, 189, 190, and 192. With each of the remaining items to put on next week's consent agenda.
Very good. Motion has been made to distribute the items we heard today, both on the regular and consent agendas for next week, as outlined by the commissioner. Discussion? Seeing none, you're recognized to close.
I quote.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public, office holders, or other agencies who would like to comment on any items not appearing on today's agenda? Seeing none. That brings us to County Administrator comments. Please proceed.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have several items this afternoon. The first is was noted on the agenda and was included in the packet for the commissioners and for the public. This is for awareness that we've been notified by the City of Liberty that they're holding a public hearing in front of the city council on Monday, May 23 at 7:00. This is regarding another amendment, the 13th Amendment to the development plan for the redevelopment of downtown area. And this is regarding the building at 117 West Kansas Street. So it's provided for the commissioners' information and awareness to the public. The second item that I have for the commissioners would be, and I ask your indulgence on this, we are striving to accommodate a request that we have for a special event to be held. And because of the timing and the sensitivity of their timing and the scheduling of our meetings, because we pushed back June and not having a meeting June 1st, I'm going to ask Deputy County Administrator Kuntz to come up and talk about that particular special event. You do have documentation in front of you about that event. And certainly feel free to ask Donna any questions. My propose is to put this on next week's agenda for the commissioners' action, which would then accommodate the applicant. But we wanted to share with you just information about it and give you the opportunity to ask questions of staff.
Please proceed.
Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. And thank you for letting me bring this up as a discussion item. We have a group that has been coming out to Smithville Lake, specifically Kelsey Short area, for over 20 years. This is the Society for Creative Anachorisms, SCA for short. And they did not meet for two years due to COVID. And honestly, I think everybody got out of the habit of that we have to fill out forms and get on a schedule. They have an event coming up, which is called Lily's War. And what this group is, they are a a period reenactment group. They're quite fun. If you're ever out there and you go by and see what's going on in the field, they're really quite fun to watch. But they have an event coming up June 15th through the 26th. They set up camp. They have their tents and everything out there. But because of the timing, if we move this to the next scheduled, it would have been June 8th, with approval not being able to be obtained until June 15th. And this event, they are hoping to be able to start their event on June 15th. So I just wanted, and they also have an event later on in the year, but that's not, we have lots of time before September. So I just wanted to bring this up as a discussion item, to let you know this is something we would like to bring to you next week, to allow the SCA to continue their long history with meeting here at Smithville Lake with us. And I'm happy to answer any other questions I can about the group.
Any further discussion?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
Then we will have this on your agenda under the regular session, since we've kind of changed our normal process. And we'll provide this information also in the packet to the public for next week's action item. And the last item I would like to bring up, and I believe wanted to talk to the commission about August and August meetings, there are five Wednesdays in August. And certainly, we know that commissioners and staff actually take advantage of those months with five Wednesdays to plan time away from the office. And so kind of wanted to talk to the commissioners about which Wednesdays in August that there may or may not be a conflict in which meetings in Wednesday that we wanted to hold meetings. So the dates are August 3, August 10, August 17, August 24, and August 31. Now, I am aware of a commissioner that does have a commitment and will be out August 24 and August 31. So obviously, we're going to be short at least one of our meetings. I've also believed that someone is making plans and may have already made plans where they may be gone August 3. So, you know, we're kind of looking at how we're going to sort of accommodate that. And just kind of wanted to get the commissioners' thoughts about that, so that we could publicize when those meetings are going to be. And certainly, for planning and zoning as we meet with applicants, knowing the schedule this far in advance allows us to work with those applicants.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any comments from commissioners?
On well, on that item, so are you looking for feedback right now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
They're camping. Yeah, we can have feedback, right? They're not making a decision.
What's concerning me is we're talking, you know, I don't think this is, I'm just a little bit maybe concerned about sunshine law. This is under comments, not discussion.
That's correct. I guess I would loosely call this more administrative discussion than I would a substantive one. You know, I don't think in this format, we could talk about something you want to vote on. So for example, the last item with the SCA, it's just more notice. It would not be appropriate to say, well, I'd be in favor of that. This, however, is a scheduling issue. And so I think it's really more administrative. So I have a little more comfort level with with having a discussion about what's everybody's schedule look like, so that we can then set up the our agenda for the, you know, to do the public's business.
That's fine. I just, like I say, I've been, you know, over the course of several years, I've become a little sensitized to sunshine law considerations. So I just wanted to get your legal opinion before we went forward with any kind of exchange.
Sure.
Very well. Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, I don't I have no conflicts and happy to do whatever works best for everyone. Thanks.
I will double-check my calendar, because I am one of those, the August 3 was, we're putting Grandma on a on a plane to take a vacation. So I will confirm with her that she is indeed going, and I'll get back to you.
Happily, we do have some time to to work through this. So that is certainly something that is an advantage. And we should certainly take advantage of the time we have to work through, you know, how we want to arrange ourselves in August.
Great. Thank you.
Comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter?
No comments. Thank you.
No com- no comments. Thank you.
And I also have no comments. That brings us to approval of the minutes. There are none listed today. Written reports? Are there any written reports?
Written reports.
No written reports to be submitted. Executive sessions, there are none listed. That brings us to recess and adjournment.